Good evening, folks. Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic under whose command this is intended, one nation, united in heaven, with the great justicery of God. Thank you. It's a special meeting of the Bennington Select Board. It is September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. I'll introduce our board. We have Tom Jacobs, Mike Keen.
Good evening.
Sharon Brush, vice chair. I'm Greg Van Houten, chair. James Carroll, Justin Porcoran, John McFadden, our town manager, Stu Hurd, and Linda Bermudez reporting. Tonight's only topic on the agenda is the Shire's Housing Monument you developmentally grant to the ward. We are discussing the processing of that ward through the town of Bennington. We have to sign that grant over to Shire's Housing. Mr. Broderick from Shire's Housing will start the discussion. I just have a few things I want to run through. We have a sign-up sheet at the table by the door, people who would like to speak. We're asking people to speak on their own behalf, one time, try for three minutes, so everybody who wants to speak can get a shot and be concise. You can ask questions. We may or may not have the answers tonight. If we do, we'll answer them. If not, that's something we can research. The vote on this will be a week from tonight, on the twenty-second, so we have time to look into anything that comes up. I'm going to read from these lists of the next speaker. I'll introduce the first speaker and who the next speaker is, so that no one has to stand up here for half an hour waiting for the term to speak. And there is a chair there if someone's not comfortable speaking. We do not have amplification in the room. I looked into that. It messes up the KIC TV recording, so we wind up with no good public record of the meeting. So please speak concisely. You most likely will hear something that you don't agree with tonight, from one person or another. I would ask everyone to be courteous, as we will be courteous to you in speaking, and allow people to hear what they're saying. There's been a lot of words thrown around the last few weeks, so I just want to address that right now. The word prejudice has been thrown around. We all have prejudices. I have them. We're born, you know, we're raised with them. A prejudice can be as mild as basing your decisions on experiences and associations. It can be as severe as basing them on your experiences and associations to vilify something. There's a big one, though, so we try not to do that. When we do that to demonize a segment of our population, that's bigotry. We don't like that, but it's not illegal. When you deny someone the opportunity that would normally be available to someone else, through that, it becomes discrimination. That is illegal. Those are topics that have come up. We'd like to hear everybody's thoughtful discussion. Your prejudices and your background and your associations are not illegal. They're, we own them. We all have them, you know, I have them. So let's treat each other as neighbors, as we like to do, and move forward. I'm going to introduce Mr. Broderick first, and he's going to bring us up to date, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mr. Select Board. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight on all sides of this issue, which I understand has been very, very contentious. And several people have said to me that this has been the most contentious issue that's faced Bennington in forty years. I've only been here for nine years, but I can say there have been some contentious issues even during that time. And before that, we had a battle over the Bennington bypass, a battle over the construction of a new middle school. So other people have said to me, "Bennington, where the battle never really ended." So I think this is really a continuation of a longer battle. And I think the debate that we have had here is no more severe than battles that have taken place over housing developments all across this country. So in the heat of the moment, yes, the tone of this battle has gotten somewhat severe. But in this country, we have elections, and the next day, we move on. And in this country, we have battles over contentious issues. And the next day, when things are done, the dust settles, and we get back on the same page. You know, this is a great community, and I think a lot of what we've heard really has come up from people who care very genuinely about their community. We've had a lot of bad things happen here in Bennington in the past few years. We've had factories that have moved away, stores that are closed. We have a lot of vacant storefronts. We got a terrible article on the front page of the New York Times about heroin addiction, which is a very severe problem here. But I think people have confused the development that we're proposing with more of the same, more of that trend. I respectfully say it's not more of the same trend. It's quite different. And in fact, it's part of the solution. It's not the only solution, but it's part of the solution. And it's actually something that moves the town in the right direction. So members of the Select Board, thank you for accepting our, or thank you for agreeing to be a partner with us for this grant, the way that the town has been many years. And I hope that you vote yes and accept this award, so that we can move forward. We don't have a lot of new facts to present tonight, so what I'm going to do is summarize some of the facts and comment on some of the debate that's taking place. The facts have been clearly laid out in my previous meetings. The state has priorities about how incentivizes development. The state of Vermont has said, "We don't want to build on farmland. We don't want to build sprawling communities that'll create suburban neighborhoods." The state incentivizes residential development close to downtowns and village centers. This development does exactly that. We have, the Bennington County Regional Commission puts together a very detailed plan for the region. This development, and again, includes smart growth principles, building close to downtowns, reinvigorating our village centers by having more people living close to the village centers and having more walkable communities. This development is completely consistent with the regional plan as prepared by Bennington County Regional Commission. The town plan, which is voted on by this Select Board, approved by this Select Board, very clearly incentivizes development of all sorts of housing, especially housing that's close to downtown and that meets the documented need for increased residential and rental development in particular. Finally, the zoning regulations, clearly, that are developed by the Planning Commission and voted on by this Board. The zoning regulations encourage development of this sort of thing in certain zones. And this is an asset right use in the zone in which we're proposing. So there's state, county, town plans, and zoning laws. They're all calling for this very kind of development. And each one of those sets of regulations has been developed, invented, by elected officials at one government, at one level of government or another. The issue's been raised about Shire's Housing. Who is Shire's Housing? What is this organization? Well, as you know, Regional Affordable Housing Corporation started twenty-four years ago and developed, at this point, two-hundred-and-thirty-two units of affordable housing in the county, about a hundred-and-fifty of which are in Bennington. The organization is fully sustainable and set up for the long haul. In fact, the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, the Vermont Community Development Program, and the Vermont Housing Finance Agency all saw fit to entrust this organization with resources to move forward with this development. And each one of those three funding agencies requires a very, very detailed vetting, not only of the details of the project, but of the health of the organization. And I don't think we would have been funded by any of those three organizations had we been determined to be not sustainable. We've described the way that we choose tenants to live in the apartments that were entrusted with developing and managing. And we've described that there are income requirements. People need to earn a certain amount of income, enough to pay the rent without going over thirty of their income for rent. But they also need to be below a certain income to make sure that the developments that we build serve the people that they're intended for, which is people just below sixty percent of median income. We have a local staff and a local board of people who are from this community. We are not some outside developer that is looking to make a quick buck and move on. It's a nonprofit organization, five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization. Anything that's made any extra money gets reinvested in programs and services that we provide in this community. You've heard from a lot of people who are opposing this development. People who are in opposition to a development are usually very, very motivated. And people who support a development like this usually say, "Nah, I don't see it as a big problem. I see it as, it'll be fine. It'll be okay." So people who are in opposition to these kinds of developments usually come out in large numbers and make their opposition very well-known, which we've seen over the past two months. There are a lot of supporters out there for this development who don't want to be nearly as vocal. A lot of the residents that we serve are here tonight, but a lot didn't really want to come. They don't want to call themselves out as being residents of the housing that we provide because they know it's controversial. They don't want people yelling at them. They don't want to be targeted. There are a lot of businesses out there, business owners, that know that increased traffic downtown will help their businesses, but they don't want to be public about their support because they're afraid of alienating certain other of their customers. And in fact, certain businesses that are in the work that we do, that are construction companies and contractors, that have actually benefited from the developments we've done in the past and stand to benefit most from this one, and they are not here tonight, and, you know, they don't want to be public about this because they're afraid of alienating their other customers. And I think that's fine. I, we didn't ask them, we asked them to come, and we didn't pressure them or lean on them, because I think that would have been unfair. This is a very contested issue, and we don't want people to choose businesses based on their support for this development or for our future developments. A lot of people have said, a number of opponents have said, "We don't need any more affordable housing. We have enough." I think most of the people have said that are homeowners or already have stable housing, because there's a lot of people out there who are saying, "We need this." And if you've ever had to find a place, a rental, in Bennington recently, you'll know it's not that easy. Look on Craigslist. I sent the Select Board members a link to today's listing, or yesterday's listings, on Craigslist. Look in the Bennington classified. There are just not a lot of rentals that are affordable in Bennington. People have said, "What we really need are jobs. We don't need more housing." When what we really need is jobs. Well, we're in agreement that we need jobs. Of course, we need jobs. Of course, we need to build our economy and strengthen our economy, absolutely. But we're bringing in housing funding from the outside, federal funding that's already allocated for housing. So if we don't apply for that money and bring it here to invest in Bennington, that's, those same dollars will go to Burlington and Brattleboro and Barrow and other towns offering the money. Why shouldn't we take advantage of the resources that are there that are already for housing? You can't take housing funds and apply them to an economic development program. Although this project will create jobs through the construction industry, and anytime you invest four and a half, five million dollars into a local economy, there's some natural spin-off for longer-term creation of ongoing work, of ongoing jobs. But we're not promising that this is going to create a hundred jobs. It's not that kind of a thing. It's not a pure economic development program that's going to put hundreds of people to work. Certainly, we need that, but what people say, "What we need are jobs, not housing," I don't see the correlation. We agree that we need jobs. People have said, "Why not keep doing rehabs? We have plenty of deteriorated housing out there. Why not keep doing rehabs of old affordable housing or old rental housing?" We still are. That's primarily been the work that we've done. And although our mission clearly states preservation of housing and construction of infill housing, which is clearly what this step, what this development, proposed development is, we continue to do rehab as our primary business. We have an application pending for twenty-six, rehab of twenty-six apartments that we already own. The next one after that, I promise, will be another full rehab with no new construction add. So new construction is a pretty small part of the business that we've undertaken. And in fact, I think the only reason why we took on this size development is because of the nature of that piece of vacant land that's there. You know, we would not have cut down the Hawks Woods. I've said this many times. You know, somebody else cut down the Hawks Woods, and it was tragic. But it's, they're gone. The woods are gone. There's a road that's been roughened. There's sewer lines, water lines, electrical lines, they're all there. This is zoned for housing. There's a permit already for housing. Somebody's going to build housing on that site at some point along the way. We think we can do it best. We think we can do it in a way that the rest of the neighborhood will be okay with, and this whole town will be proud of. Character of the neighborhood. A lot of opponents have brought up the issue of their character of the neighborhood. It's just not right there. It's just too big. It just doesn't fit. Well, the Thaniel Court is actually, it's a kind of mini-development with a number of rentals, of individually owned units being rented out to others. The twelve units at Apple Ridge, at least four of them are rented out now. All along South Street, the Abudding property owners, number of rentals, including a five-unit building and a six-unit building. On Silver Street, there are a number of rentals. So it's more or less a rental community there. There are a lot of homeowners left, but there are, it is largely a rental community. So this is not particularly out of character with the existing neighborhood. People have said, "Just listen. Why don't you just listen to what we're saying? Why don't you listen to the people who are opposed to this?" Well, we listen, you know, very respectfully and humbly. We've listened to what people have had to say. But we also listen to people who haven't come to the meetings or are just looking to get by. We're listening to people who can't come here tonight because they work second shift or because their kid is a soccer practice boy because they're getting food on tins tonight. So not everyone can come out to meetings. Not everyone can speak for themselves and speak up via lay-in in public setting. But we've listened very closely. There's a lot of people out there who are asking us to expand rental opportunities so that they could live in a quality place. The real estate market in Bennington, no secret, it's not really strong right now. There are a lot of houses for sale. There are a lot of houses that have lingered on the market for sale for a very long time. I think people who've been watching property values will admit property values have decreased here somewhat over time in all neighborhoods, all throughout the town. So I don't see how that translates into a weak rental market. In fact, more housing for sale for owner occupancy, I think, is more of an indication that it's harder to buy a home than it used to be. I think after the financial meltdown, it just became a lot harder for people to get into homeownership. Much more difficult than it was before the financial, you know, trouble of two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So I think that's leaving a lot of people in the rental market who would have been able to purchase a home if our economy had been stronger and if our credit markets hadn't tightened up so much. In addition, we also know that a lot of those homes are for sale because of foreclosures. And when there's a foreclosure, that homeowner goes back to being a renter. So I think this has put undue pressure on the rental market here in Bennington and around the country. We have evidence of that in a market study, which we shared with you. And once again, I direct you to the listings. Look what's out there. Look on Craigslist and look in the Bennington banner. Look anywhere where property owners are advertising their rentals. It's just not a strong market right now. It's a very, very tight market. It's not helpful. When people are starting to, when people are trying to start families and get up onto that first row of economic ladder, it's a tough time for them right now if they want to rent in Bennington. We've talked about property values. There's a lot of fear that this sort of a development decreases property values. There's just no evidence of that. There's just no evidence that this kind of development or affordable housing in general decreases property values. There have been studies. We've shared those studies. You know, we, you know, we are going to watch very closely over the coming years. And if we're successful, and if we get into construction, we get to build this thing, we're going to watch real estate prices very, very closely, property values very closely. But there's a lot of different factors that go into property values. Schools and the economy, jobs and everything. So to point at this to say, "That's going to be the end of this town. That's going to tip the scales so much that property values will never rebound." You know, there's, I don't, I just don't see the evidence for that. There's no evidence. Traffic concerns were raised. We, you know, the Development Review Board requires traffic studies when certain developments are proposed that will have an impact. This didn't even rise to the level of needing a full-blown traffic study. We had an opinion of a traffic engineer that said the impact on traffic will be minimal. The schools, the issue was raised about the schools, how this is going to bankrupt our school system. It's going to cause overcrowding, cause us to have to build new schools and cause all of our property taxes to go through the roof. Superintendent and the three principals of the elementary school came out and said, "You know, it's very, very likely to be ten to twelve elementary school aged children, and that's just not going to have a measurable impact on the schools." So that's confirmed by the superintendent and the principals. Water, there were concerns about the water system not being able to, being overcapacity. That was, again, refuted. No evidence that this is going to cause any strain on the water system. In fact, we will be paying into the water system, which will help. You know, crime and drugs, I haven't spoken to this one yet because I think it's absurd. The organization has a great reputation for making sure that we don't attract anyone here who's, you know, contributing to illegal activity, or we don't tolerate that. We screen very carefully. This is just, you know, a rather absurd thing that I hope the police department will be able to respond to. Condominium owners bought, many of the condominium owners, especially the ones who bought early in the process, bought with the expectation that there were going to be forty condominiums there. You know, I'm sorry that it didn't work out that way. I'm sorry that the market tanked and that the development stopped. But I think condominium developments stopped all over this country. Still, to this day, there are nine of the twelve that have been sold to individual owners. I'd like to have the Apple Ridge condominium be a twelve-unit, strong, healthy condominium that's our neighbor, that has strong property values going forward, and that lives in peace and harmony with everyone else in the neighborhood there. Property taxes, the issue of property taxes came up early, especially in this debate. And we demonstrated, right here in this room with the assessor present, and it was actually his math, that demonstrated that regulated apartment, developments that have regulated rents, meaning we can't charge more than a certain amount, are eligible for an up to ten percent reduction in their property taxes. The real reduction for us is six, is under six percent. And the amount that we pay is a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year on fourteen properties in Bennington. If we didn't have Act sixty-eight and we weren't eligible for a discount for regulated properties, we would have paid a hundred and fifteen thousand. That's the difference, six thousand dollars. And for that six thousand dollar difference, we provide, I think, a quality service to this town. I think it's really one of the most important things that we've heard through this debate, and one of the things that I am committed to acting on, is the fact that we have single-family homes and duplexes out there that have all turned to renter occupancy. And owner occupancy, we will agree, strengthens neighborhoods. I'm very proud to say that I look, I see people, our residents, all the time gardening and taking care of the front of their properties, of their apartments. I saw someone last night outside, right on South Street, gardening in one of our apartments. So renters frequently have great pride of ownership. They don't want to live in a dump. They're happy to live in a nice place. But owner occupancy, really, I think, I'll admit, we have, owners have a vested interest. We need to work together to improve the owner occupancy rate. We had a period in this town where all of the duplexes that had previously been owner-occupied on one side, where the owner lived there and rented out, often to a family member next door, a whole swamp of town has become renter-occupied duplexes. And we need to turn that around. And I'm committed to us working with everyone here to make that possible. And I hope to announce something more specific in the coming months that we can really specifically start to dig into that problem. Finally, folks, you're going to hear a lot tonight, and you're going to hear from a lot of people on both sides of this issue. But what I'll say in conclusion is that when you vote next week, we're not going to have a victory celebration. In fact, when we get our development, when we get our DRB permit, we're not going to celebrate. And when we start construction and we finish construction, that's not going to be the time to celebrate. The time to celebrate is one year after the last person moves in. Because Shire's Housing is more than bricks and mortar. We do more than just build buildings. We build neighborhoods. We build communities. We build a stronger Bennington. And by allowing us to move forward with this development with a positive vote next week, you'll allow us to continue on that mission to build a strong community. Thank you.
If you want to stay up here, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. All right, folks? Thank you, everyone. The first speaker will be Chris Williams, and the second speaker will be Dave Prowle. John, if you want to stay up, is there a seat over there for you? Yeah, next to Tom, just stay handy and pick a seat. Now, John was invited to make a presentation to start this, as the Shire's Housing, on behalf of Shire's Housing, so.
Good evening. My name is Chris Williams. I represent the Shaft Street. We're on Chair of the Line Commission. I was recently retired as architect for Williams College. I've been years in that position. And I've been a longtime board member of Shire's Housing, past president, president, secretary, and board director. I'd like to kind of review with you the history of Shire's Housing, through this very individual corporation here in Bennington. We tackled some of the really tough neighborhoods in this town. Vermont Avenue, Caravan Lane. And I think any objective person would have to say that these areas have been raised up considerably by our efforts. We converted the old Corby Whitney School into senior housing, which is a immensely successful project that serves the important needs of this community. And so, and so, we should have earned some credibility by this point, twenty-four years of work in this town. And I think we have, at least for some people. So, you know, the organization has worked long and hard to pick various projects. Last spring, we opened Roy Branch Project on North Branch Street. It's almost identical in profile to this project that's proposed here. On Silver Street, there was no opposition. There was no ruckus about it. And when I went down there last week to kind of see how things looked a year and a half later, there wasn't a single car up on concrete blocks. In fact, the place was immaculate. So I encourage you to go down to North Branch Street and see a similar project to this. Take a look with your own eyes and see what you think, because it is very similar to what's proposed here. The project complies with your town plan. I've been reading chapter five of your town plan today. Sounds like a pretty close description of what we're proposing, point by point, in there. It complies with your zoning regulations. We would be foolish indeed to propose a project that didn't comply with zoning. Of course, the DRB has the last say on that question, and they haven't said yet, but... Of course, the DRB has the last say on that question, and they haven't said yet, but, you know, we've constructed it to be well under minimum requirements of zoning. Density is twenty-four units less than the twenty-eight which the site was originally permitted for. So, you know, zoning will have a say on this thing, we feel, on solid ground here.
What's the timeline? What's the time, please?
Mr. Williams, we're over three minutes. If you could wrap up, please.
I will wrap up, thank you. And, you know, this pass-through of funds that is being discussed here tonight, I'm aware of this board having done that on two previous occasions. I encourage you to continue on with it. Reading quickly from Housing Policies and Recommendations in the Town Plan, number four says, "Work with Regional Affordable Housing Corporation now and on the Shires, other housing agencies, and private developers to identify housing needs and develop an adequate supply of affordable housing." We encourage you to live up to your town planning.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. First, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but if we could keep that down so we can communicate, I appreciate it on both sides. Mr. Crowley's up, Lloyd Westcott is after that.
I had a lot of, good evening. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and to you. I had a lot of notes before, when I first came in, and after listening to Mr. Broderick and the gentleman right previous, I put them in my pocket. Because for us to pretend that this is a meeting about runoff, school population, traffic, that's just not so. This is about not wanting them in our neighborhood, whoever they are. And it has been amply explained that the evils that have been presented as the residents that are going to be in this project are totally unfounded and without base. And this, I just, I, you know, this is about having a belief system that refuses to accept the facts, and the facts are represented to you. And these people aren't lying, you know, these people, they've been in this town for twenty-four years, they're telling you the truth. They deserve this money. They deserve, this town deserves this project. And if they think otherwise, you're just lying to yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Lloyd Westcott, we have William Colvin after that.
Yeah, my name is Lloyd Westcott, living in Bennington. And the problem that I've got with Shire's Housing, they sat there and told us in the beginning, oh, we do criminal background checks, we do credit checks, we don't rent to riffraff. Well, that's not so, because up in Arlington, the guy is a two-time convicted felon, which was, is still on house arrest, and they rented to him, and he was able to wake up their neighbors not once, but twice before the police took him into custody. And then I find out about North Branch Street, that there's criminals living in there. Now, I haven't been able to confirm or deny it, but the thing is, I called his office, he didn't even return my call. I need you guys to make him come out with the names and their whole criminal history before you go and approve, let's say, a hundred thousand dollar grant. Because we don't want more criminals in our community, which they said they wouldn't do. And that's not what I'm hearing on the streets. Thank you for your time.
John, do you have any input on your process for screening? And we have, I got a copy of your application, but if you want to...
I don't have a lot to add. I would just hope that at some point along the way, the chief police would confirm that the units that we have out there don't cause problems with crime.
Wait a second. He's made a very specific allegation, and you need to address that. Are there, in fact, tenants who have been convicted who are in your properties?
Not that I'm aware of, Jim. Okay? We screen very carefully. Am I going to say that no one in any one of our units ever got picked up for shoplifting twenty years ago? You know, I'm not going to say that. But no, I mean, do we have convicted felons who are convicted of serious crimes recently? We do credit and criminal background checks to make sure that the people living in our units are not criminals.
Fair enough. Thank you. Mr. Colvin.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Joe Colvin. I'm a resident of the neighborhood of the proposed Monument View Development. I'm here to enthusiastically support this project and the work of Shire's Housing. The proposed Shire's Housing project is not only the most significant economic development project proposed during the time any of you, except Sharon Brush, has served as a select ward, but it is economic development of the very best kind. It is economic development that provides both short-term and long-term benefit, and which is consistent with every planning document created by this community. For example, extrapolating from a study by the National Association of Home Builders, the Monument View project can be expected to create twenty to twenty-five short-term jobs and support eight to ten permanent jobs in this community. Most fascinating about this study is the fact that the impacts of market rate housing are nearly identical. In short, the Shire's project offers the same economic benefit to Bennington as would a private, for-profit development of similar size. Despite the claims you approve, there is in fact not enough affordable rental housing in Bennington. More Bennington renters pay a higher share of their incomes for housing than do residents in the rest of Bennington County, in Vermont, and even in the United States as a whole. By definition, based upon housing costs, sixty-one percent of Bennington's renter population does not have adequate money to invest in basic human needs, to spend in the local economy, or to save for a home they might own in the future. The South Street project is entirely consistent with the goals and policies of the Bennington Town Plan, the Bennington Neighborhood Plan, your Bennington Strategic Economic Development Plan, where it's a priority strategy to this exact project, Bennington's Land Use and Development Regulation, the National Main Street Approach to Downhill Revitalization, and Smart Growth Principles, all documents this board has endorsed. As a community, we spend countless hours planning for our future in open, public processes. We do this planning to provide guidance as to how to proceed when faced with opportunities and decisions. Given the chance to follow those plans and support a project that meets exactly the goals this community has outlined, and which is grounded in best practice from successful communities around the country, that project, this project, should be embraced wholeheartedly. The debate about the proposed Shire's Housing project has lacked the civility and respectful tenor of others I've witnessed in my fifteen-plus years working in economic and community development in the region. Yet what I find most discouraging is that even as the select ward and town administration are under fire for not doing enough to bolster our local economy, you get met with hostility and criticism for stepping up to play a vital role in encouraging a five-and-a-half million dollar project perfectly in line with Bennington's stated goals. I trust this criticism will not sway you from continuing to support this vital project. I strongly encourage the select ward to accept a seven-hundred thousand dollar Vermont Community Development Program grant to benefit the Shire's project. But beyond supporting the grant, I hope board members will actively embrace and openly verbalize support for this critical economic and community development effort. It is economic and community development of the best kind. It is the right thing for working individuals and families in our community. It is the right thing for our local economy. It is the right thing for Bennington.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. I have Don Miller as the next one. I didn't call his name, I just saw him leave the room. So we're going to go to Abby Shapiro, and I'll let Don speak when he comes back in. And Jessica Chapman is after Abby if Don's not back yet.
I don't think Abby heard you.
Abby Shapiro? Oh, yeah.
Thank you for holding this meeting. I'd like to mention first for me, this is not an issue of prejudice about a person's character or lifestyle being tied to their income. I'm up here to state as strongly as I can that this is a short-range vision that dramatically alters an established and historic neighborhood, and that this housing project will have a negative impact on Bennington. There has not been opposition on this scale for Shire's other projects. Perhaps that's a clue that this one is just not quite right. It seems to go against models of urban planning, and truthfully seems to go against the vision we are trying to promote to tourists and investors. A project like this would never be considered in Old Bennington, North Bennington, Apple Hill, because the residents protect their neighborhoods, and they can, and they can. This is an area worthy of being shown and protected. We need to hold on to what character we have, and a block of turn-of-the-century buildings with an urban housing project in the backyard does not hold character, nor does doubling the density of a neighborhood in one broad stroke. We need to have a vision about the whole picture and how this fits in, or, as I believe, does not. Should this project go through, I can easily see all those beautiful homes on Grammew Street converted to rentals, because that may be the only way they'll be saleable. This has already been done to one of those buildings on the corner. After reading the summary of the Shire's recent informational meeting, I was struck by two things. First, their housing seems to have the same issues with occupants that those of us who are landlords encounter. They're already planning to mitigate that with management policies and a security guard. This while simultaneously telling us there will not be problems. Secondly, these buildings are going to be here for a very long time, once built. Shire's management will change, or evolve, or even be replaced. We don't have control over future management policies. This is not just about income, urban density brings urban problems, and this is dense. I mean, perhaps not for somebody who comes from a city like New York, but this is Bennington. These are rentals, and tenants by their very nature, being renters, move more frequently than homeowners, and as a result, have less commitment to the neighborhood. This development goes against urban, all urban planning practices. We're still attempting to portray ourselves as a charming Vermont town. A strongly encouraged model for healthy neighborhoods is green space. There's not enough of it in this project. If you presume, as Shire's wants us to, that these people are not car owners, there's not really any nearby green space that's easy to access. I mean, the park in the town offices is rather small. The other nearby park is the one next to Stewart's, and little needs to be said about that, because certain activities make it undesirable. Current urban planning models encourage a mix of incomes. Overloading a neighborhood with one income group does not allow for the right kind of diversity for a healthy neighborhood. And as I said previously, the chances are good that this project will lead to more rentals and less homeownership in that neighborhood. The idea that these renters will walk downtown for their needs is ambitious, but flawed. There are no grocery stores downtown, and the bussing to North Side Drive for fresh food is limited to weekdays and some Saturday hours. Working people, who these are going to be, shop at all hours. We're a community of cars, we do not have the urban infrastructure, and we are not accustomed to living without vehicles. People will have cars, their visitors will have cars. There will be traffic issues on that impossibly narrow Silver Street, which I'm sure will be chosen more often for an entrance and exit than South Street.
Abby, you're over three.
Okay, I've got one more paragraph.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a project in a vacuum. You're approving it without assessing the larger and future vision. The result is narrowly focused, single issue of more affordable housing supposedly solved in one huge project. This is exactly opposite of the suggestions made by the housing study commissioned by you and paid for by us. Yes, the town sadly zoned for more units than are planned here. Even so, it was zoned for too many units. This was the beginning of the short-sightedness. You can alter that decision by working towards rezoning, you can slow down the project by refusing the grant and encouraging the DRB appointed by you to look at the negative impact on the larger community. In the past, the DRB has focused on the minutia of planting and turning lanes. The impact of this development on the community is huge and worthy of attention. The Shire should be encouraged to invest in the community by purchasing and rehabilitating many available units currently built, as they have done so successfully in other neighborhoods. The projected cost per unit could be more successfully spent on existing properties. We elect government to represent us, not tell us what we should want. A thousand-plus people signed those petitions opposing this. We can't be all wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Don Miller? After Don's going to be Jessica Chapman.
Have we limited to three minutes?
Yeah, we're shooting for that.
Read that, I'll just excerpt a little bit.
Appreciate it, thank you, Don.
I want to start by thanking Stu Hurd for his article in The Banner, asking us all to focus on the facts. And I also appreciate his encouragement of impatience with everyone who would express their opinions on this very complicated issue. Freedom of speech, along with its close cousins, freedom of association, and freedom to petition are the hallmarks of our democracy. Thank you, Stu. The decision this board is faced with today is different than the one addressed earlier in May of this year. Then the vote was to go forward with an application for a grant to help fund the current Shire's housing project. A lot has come into perspective since that vote. There's been, of course, a lot of testimony from citizens requiring some time for reflection and digestion. The developer has prepared the application for the grant, and that application has been submitted to our town, by our town management. The application has been approved with whatever conditions and stipulations, direct and implied. This board has been asked to approve that grant with all of its ramifications, and most importantly, the VCDP housing study report has been received. During the interval, a lot of things have happened, a lot of news, and Mr. Broderick referred to those, I'll jump over that. I believe all of these items are relevant to your decision of whether to support the funding of the project. How will the Shire's project affect these challenges facing our town? Now, specifically to the grant application, I have a couple of observations and questions. This application has been in the works for a couple of years. The town staff has, I'm sure, worked with the developer to advise and shape the application. That is their job, they have done it well. This may give the staff a feeling of having a vested interest in this application, but let's distinguish between their role as advisors and your role as legislators and representatives of the people. You are the only elected officials, you are the only directly elected representatives of the people to review any part of this Shire's housing project. I suggest that your role is not simply to look at the narrow pipeline approach to the question, but to look at the whole project. Under the VCDP program guidelines, the town is asked to sign off at two points. First, the town CEO is asked to submit the application. Second, the legislative body is asked to vote on the grant as awarded. Normally, this gives citizens two opportunities to be represented in the process. Thus, the administration of this government program looks to the community for representative sign-off, not once, but twice during the process, at the beginning and at the end. What the VCDP program guidelines cannot be expected to know is that our town's CEO is not an elected official, but is rather a staff person. Thus, this inferentially puts a greater burden on our legislative body to review the application and grant, and grant in their entirety to adequately represent the citizens of the community. The application is well-written, but there are numerous statements in the application about needs of the town's position that the VCDP may have relied upon in making their decision. Do you feel comfortable in embracing and adopting those statements as a matter of fact and as a matter of policy? The application also contains many numbers which raise the questions of whether the project is economically viable. One million in loans, four millions in equity investments, skipping over. Do you feel comfortable signing off on these numbers? The application seems to indicate that there's a seven-hundred thousand dollar grant that will be loaned to Mountain View Housing LP. What, if any, is the purpose of that loan? What if anything happens if the loan is not paid back?
We're well over three, but I appreciate you. I said we're well over three minutes, but I know, I've read this, so I know you're close, so.
I'll skip a couple of examples.
I appreciate your...
You know, a question, have you seen any financial statements, pro forma's, or other business plan from Mountain View Housing LP? Any program that is dependent on selling tax credits is dependent on tax breaks for the wealthy. Only high-income individuals and large corporations will invest in a tax credit program that the LIHTC program, like this one. When high-income individuals and large corporations receive tax credits, there's a shift for the tax, of the tax burden to lower-income individuals. The average taxpayer pays more. Although this program may have... Although this program may have had merit years ago, it may have outlived its time. It is becoming a large loophole and benefit for high-income taxpayers. We don't have many of those in Vermont. Eliminating these tax breaks for the rich should be among the first changes when tax reform comes. We can start now, just saying no. I think there are many facts that need to be considered prior to approving this grant. I don't think it is as simple as grabbing taxpayer money just because it may be available. From what I see, I would be very hesitant to endorse the project. Good luck in your review.
Thanks, Don. Jessica Chapman is next; Mary Garrish following.
Hi, Jessica Chapman. I'm speaking as a new homeowner in the neighborhood in question. I recently bought my first home on Imperial Avenue in February, very close to the asking price, with full knowledge of the Shire's project coming in. Just a warning, this is probably going to be about three and a half minutes; I feel comfortable taking that liberty at this point. I'm here to give my very strong support to the proposed Shire's housing project. I've had an extremely high opinion of Shire's housing and what it brings to the community in terms of both quality, affordable housing, as well as aesthetics, since I first learned of the organization, when I was getting to know Bennington a few years ago. During a run down North Branch Street with my husband, I pointed to a particularly attractive cul-de-sac, which my husband then explained to me was a rack, or now Shire's Affordable Housing Project. Since then, I've paid attention to other Shire's housing around town, only to find that as a rule, Shire's units improve the aesthetics of the neighborhoods to which they belong. To put it as clearly as possible, the design standards that I've noticed that are met by Shire's housing make neighborhoods look more rather than less affluent, period. More importantly, the organization serves our fellow Benningtonians admirably by providing safe, clean, quality, affordable housing for those qualifying, I want to emphasize qualifying, low-to-moderate-income families that are lucky enough to secure rentals in their available units. There are too few available units. My understanding is that Shire's has quite a waiting list for their rentals, composed of current Bennington residents, which speaks clearly to the need for more, not less, of what Shire's provides. I urge the Select Board to hew closely to the facts about this project and disregard all claims and representations that run counter to those established facts, as they deliberate over whether or not to accept the grant for which they have agreed to apply. Most fundamentally, please remember that the Monument View Apartments will be rented only to those families earning, my understanding is approximately $25,000 to $36,000, who can pass the required background checks. The goal is to provide safe, quality, affordable housing for people making between 50% and 60% of the median income in Bennington. The Shire's organization has a strong history of renting its units to establish Bennington residents with very few exceptions. Anyone who wishes to move to Bennington from the outside to rent from Shire's will have to meet the stringent income requirements and pass the same background checks. More likely, what will happen is that working individuals and families currently living in substandard rental housing, or those who have chosen not to live in substandard rental housing but to pay a disproportionate amount of their income for higher-quality housing in Bennington, will be given a chance to improve their living standard by moving into the new complex. That could enable working families to save for a future down payment, thereby facilitating the very homeownership that some opponents of the Shire's project have championed in prior meetings, which suggests that maybe we're not on such different pages as it may seem. In closing, I want to make it crystal clear that I hope the people of this town will remain open to future discussions about how to provide affordable housing for truly low-income members of our community. That's not what we're talking about here. We can make no assumptions, nor should we attempt to make any assumptions, about why certain individuals earn below a certain income threshold. But there's ample evidence to suggest that providing quality, affordable housing in safe neighborhoods is one of the primary means by which communities can combat the many negative effects of poverty. While it is critically important to discuss this current project in accurate terms and to recognize that it is not, I emphasize "not," designed to serve the poorest members of our community, I feel that it's equally important to avoid defending this project on the grounds that it is acceptable because it does not serve the poorest members of our community. Let us support this project on its own merits, without wrapping ourselves in a political straitjacket that will foreclose future opportunities to improve the living standards of our fellow Benningtonians, rich and poor. Thank you for letting me address this important topic.
After Mary Garrish, we have Mary Morrissey.
Good evening. My name is Mary Garrish, and I am a renter here in Bennington. I do feel passionate about my neighborhood and my community, and that's what I'm doing here tonight. And it seems as though there are really two issues to the opposition to this project. Both of them seem to have been fed, from what I can glean, by fear and misunderstanding. The first sort of opposition claims to be factual. I think that Mr. Broderick and other speakers have adequately dispelled a lot of those notions. The second part concerns me even more, because it's not as easy to dispel. And it has to do with what we are and what we want to be as a community. It has to do with stereotypes of people that have been set forth, that we all know are not accurate, but how do we combat those? How do we, after turning ourselves inside-out over this issue, get back to being a caring community? And I'm here tonight to ask you, as our Select Board and our elected representatives, to look at the seams in that sweatshirt that's been turned inside-out, to notice that they're still all intact, and to help us turn it back right-side-out. Because the fact is that we are a caring community. So what will happen if you decide not to approve this project? Clearly, we won't have the affordable housing. Something else will happen. The most vulnerable people in our community, some of whom, as you earlier heard, are afraid to come here tonight for fear of being labeled some of those things that people have talked about. Those are the people who will be reinforced in their belief that they're not valuable members of the community, and therefore, they won't be members of the community. But you, as our Select Board, you hold in your hands a crucible, because we're engaged here in a struggle. And everybody knows that out of struggle can come either good things or bad things. Put that struggle in your crucible, please, and make sure that it comes out with the gold of unity instead of dislike or hatred. Thank you.
Mary Morrissey, and after Mary is Jim Gully.
My name is Mary Morrissey. I am a taxpayer voter and a lifelong resident of Bennington. We appreciate the opportunity for open discussion and consideration of the subsidized apartment project off Silver Street, being promoted by the co-developers, Shire's and Housing Vermont. Since the proposed development was first raised publicly at a Select Board meeting on March 24th, where Mr. Broderick made an expediated request for the town to apply for a $700,000 grant to help finance the project, a lively public debate over the merits of the project has occurred in various community forums. The level of attention drawn by this debate has been extraordinary, and dare I say, even unprecedented in recent local history. And as citizen awareness of project impacts has grown, widespread grassroots opposition has emerged from concerned voters and tax-paying residents representing a very diverse cross-section of this entire community. The degree of opposition is demonstrated by a petition that has gathered over 1,000 signatures. I was just handed another petition with another 15 names that I will make sure you also get in the short time it was circulated. The reasons for opposing the proposed project are informed and real. They deserve the full and earnest attention of this board and other town officials. On behalf of Dave Fredrickson, I have presented to each of you the petitions gathered. Please take the time to read each of the names as I did, and knowing almost every person personally who signed, they were thoughtful, knew why they wanted to sign the petition, and are and have been truly concerned with the present state and future of Bennington. They're asking this board to take, as leadership, take a step back, a deep breath, and let's plan for Bennington's future. The economy, the lack of jobs, businesses closing or downsizing, are the very real concerns of how they are going to continue to pay the ever-increasing taxes, heat their homes this winter, help pay for their children's education, and afford basic necessities of life. And naming just a few, these are the real concerns that were expressed time and time again by your constituents. I would like to note that many sought those with petitions out to be able to sign and were thankful that they were able to have the voice in the discussion by doing so. They were not badgered into signing anything. Their ages range from 21 to 96 years of age, and they come from every walk of life. Each name represents a Bennington citizen, a taxpayer, a voter, or both. Just salt of the word, just salt of the earth, hard-working individuals who have contributed greatly to the very fabric of this community on many different levels, and they support all of our citizenry. Let's be very clear on one thing: those opposing this project are not bigoted, mean-spirited, prejudiced, liars, nor members of an angry mob, as some have tried to suggest in a desperate attempt to direct, to divert attention away from the main issues. This disrespectful name-calling is baseless and only serves to impede the essential need for an open and thoughtful discussion on important topics related to the proposed project. I challenge anyone in this room to stand up and dismiss over 1,000 signature, petition signatures, as nothing more than an angry mob.
Mary, we're four minutes.
For representative, I know, three minutes.
We're at four now. Just let her.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And many have, many more, but thank you. I almost finished.
I appreciate it.
For representative democracy to work, citizens and their elected officials must be kept fully and accurately informed on all sides of an issue, and allowed to freely voice concerns as part of a transparent decision-making process. That process may not always be easy, but it's the price we must be prepared to pay to ensure functional democracy and prevent delegated power and authority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Gully's up now. I'm going to bring the chief to set up after that. I just want to make an announcement now that everybody's here. There was a scheduled DRB meeting for tomorrow on the Shire's Housing Application that has been continued to October 7th, so there is not, that is not on the agenda tomorrow for the DRB. Those meetings will be October 7th and October 21st. So if anyone was not notified that was planning to go, it's not on the agenda tomorrow.
Great, that's not out of my three minutes, I will.
No, you're at all zeros now.
Good. Thank you. My name is James Gully Senior. I think many of you folks on the board may know me. I have served as Select Board; I've served on the DRB; I've served on the old zoning board, and I'm currently on the BCA, as Stuart knows. I would like to address the board. I'm not in favor of this project, and I would like to explain why I'm not in favor of this. I'll make it brief, short, and I may be skipping around, but I apologize for that. We, my wife and I, bought a old building. It was 100 years old. I believe Mr. Jacobs represented seller, Averyna Riley. And we renovated the house with family and friends, because I was told that I have a medical problem that I would not make until age 65 or 62 for normal retirement. By doing that, we turned this place into a three-bedroom duplex, and the town staff has visited the place. My current rent is $850 a month, and I don't believe I heard what your rents are, but that's, you may want to address that afterwards. I want here to tell you that I've gone four months before I even had an application, before anybody to apply. There is a person here that had rented my place, and it currently rents my newest location, if he wished to address the conditions of it. I would appreciate that, but if he does not, I respect that. I will say that my, I would like to address, go into the taxes of what I do. My unit is assessed at $135,900. This is all public information; you can all go and retrieve this at the Lister's if you so wish. I pay $3,685.20. Therefore, that breaks down to $1,842.60 per unit. The newest project is in Roaring Branch, which I retrieved their tax form. They are assessed at $540,500, $540,600, with a special exemption of $42,500, bringing that to $498,100, which their grand total of taxes is $13,908, or that brings up to $993.43 per unit. I, as an individual, cannot compete with these people, and I try, but I cannot do it. And the reason that we got into the rental property, because it's income that we need for retirement. And if you folks grant this, they're going to put me out of business, and it's going to affect both my income, for me and my wife, both. I believe I have covered everything that I want to talk about, and I appreciate your time, and I wonder if the three minutes, right?
Three ten.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, chief to set there?
Yes, thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Paul Dusette. I'm the Chief of Police and Public Safety Director for the Town of Bennington. There are a lot of familiar faces in the room here. I want to start out by telling you that, as the Chief of Police and Public Safety Director, I want to be perfectly clear: I'm not here tonight to either to support the project or to go in the other direction and not support the project. I'm here simply to state some facts. Some residents from the Silver Street area have called and wanted to know facts, crime statistics, on Shire's housing properties. So today, I took some time to go through incident reports, and what I have found is this, and I'm more than happy to answer any of your questions, if you have specific questions. I ran the stats and the crime statistics from January 1st, 2012, through present that involve Shire's housing properties, which is 17 parcels in Bennington. Since January 1st, 2012 to present, we have made two total arrests on Shire's housing properties. One of the reasons for one of the arrests was an assault, with someone walking by the property, and the other was a direct result of an incident that took place on Shire's housing property. There have been, I had to go through these, sheet by sheet, there have been some incidents that list Shire's housing property addresses, motor vehicle crashes, motor vehicle incidents. Those are a result of, if Chief Dusette responds to 316 Safford Street in the Town of Bennington for a motor vehicle crash, when the data gets put into the computer, it says 316 Safford Street, Town of Bennington. It doesn't mean that the actual incident occurred on Shire's housing property, but for our mapping for the state of Vermont with crash reporting... for our mapping for the state of Vermont with crash reporting, we need a location to include a physical address as well as GPS coordinates, because that keeps the highway safety funds coming into Bennington, which is not why I'm here. But the bottom line is, is I want to be able to fully explain to you what the incidents are. And of the 17 parcels of property, the property that draws the most attention for the Bennington Police Department is the property located at 814 Gaige Street. That property draws the most attention because the police department finds itself assisting either the Bennington Fire Department or the Bennington Rescue Squad based on the age of some of the people, let me rephrase that, based, yes, based on the age of some of the people, they're a little more older and living in that facility. And what happens is, is when the rescue squad responds, there at times we have to respond with a key so that we can let them in or assist them with removing a resident. But it's not a criminal element. The Bennington Police Department does not just simply go out and arrest people and write tickets. We do other forms of public safety service throughout the community to include assisting the rescue squad and the fire department. So that's why we have incidents and we are referred to those locations. I also heard tonight stats, or excuse me, information about the Roaring Branch properties located off of North Branch Street, and how they've been open for approximately a year and a half. So I wanted to pay particular attention to that today, and I can tell you that since that, since those properties have been occupied, we have responded to that location a total of three times. One time was a custody issue, another time there was a resident there that was concerned that he was not properly notified about the speed bumps that were placed in, on, on that road, and another time, someone from Shire's Housing showed up to do a home inspection, and the tenant did not feel that they received proper notice. With that being said, we did find that proper notice was sent out a week in advance, and the person at that property became very cooperative when they realized that they must have missed that in their mail. So again, a total of three times we've been over to that new property. Other than that, I told you that I was only gonna present the actual facts and statistics to you, I'm not gonna talk about relationships with Mr. Broderick or Mr. McDonald who work for Shire's Housing and what our relationship is with them. I simply wanted to present the facts to you about this.
Thank you, chief. Anybody on the board have any questions to the chief?
No.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
No question.
I need you to, what I need you to do, because I do neighbor crime watching, I've been told on the Roaring Branch where you just talked about.
I'm gonna have to speak into the mic so people can hear you, because otherwise you're gonna go away.
On the North, the Roaring Branch thing, they're saying that there's criminals living there. Now, they said that they didn't rent to criminals. I need you to verify and confirm that there are actually criminals living in that building, because he's not giving a straightforward answer.
Okay, so why don't you have a seat and I'll address that. As far as criminals living in Shire's housing properties, the Bennington Police Department does not conduct background checks for Mr. Broderick or the Shire's housing project, or, excuse me, properties. In the event, this is Vermont, and there's an open, there's a public record, anyone here in this room can go down to the district court here in Bennington, it's actually called the Superior Court now, and there is a computer terminal outside of the court, and you can type in Paul Dussette. If you have my birthdate, that's great, and you can look that up, and you'll find that Paul Dussette does not have a criminal history. So if you have someone's name and date of birth, you can look up that information yourself. I think it's completely unfair for me to stand here and, and tell you that, well, this one has a criminal history or that one has a criminal history. If you have specific, specific information and you want to look that up, if you have access to the internet, you can certainly look that up. You can also run someone's criminal history by contacting VCIC here in Vermont, and if you have their name and birthday and you pay the $30, you can find out if they have criminal history. It's instant, it's an instant response. So there are ways for you to find out that information on your own. As far as the criminal record checks that they conduct, again, we do not get involved in that. We do, however, we do get involved if in fact someone comes to our office, signs a form, provides a photocopy of their government-issued ID. We will conduct brief background investigations to our own records at the Bennington Police Department, not the records of other agencies, but our own records, and we will submit that to landlords if a landlord in this community requests that we don't charge for that. It is very time-consuming, but we do not charge for that, and we will provide that information to landlords if they have a sign-off from prospective tenants. And believe you me, there are plenty of landlords in this community that do call and want this done. Again, we check our own records. So we can do that.
One question over there.
Paul's, yeah, are we in? Pretty good. Would that criminal background check at the courthouse cover criminal activity outside of Vermont, or only Vermont?
In Vermont. You won't. Sir?
Yes, chief. From what I hear you say, then, the Shires, because Austin said they do criminal background checks, you've noticed a decrease in police response to the properties that they manage. Would it be safe to state then, or extrapolate, that if the Shires went back to rehabbing areas that are quote-unquote "blighted," doing the criminal background check, bringing in people who are trying to build up a life, this would help not only build community, but also make police presence in that area, something that would be less of a problem over time, just because of the fact that they did background checks?
I think that's speculating a lot, and we're getting a little off-topic on that, I think, but appreciate the question. I think we're gonna let the chief go, he's gotta get back.
I left the soccer game to come.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and we've got a lot of people wanting to talk, but I think, I appreciate you responding to our questions and the citizens' questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is that Fion? I'm, I'm having trouble reading the first name, it's lovely handwriting. Is it a Fionia, or Fionia? Yeah, there we go.
Here I am.
And after that is Tim Morrison.
My name is Fronia Simpson. It's an unusual name, and I'm a resident of the town of Bennington. I had wanted to talk tonight about some of the reasons that the apartment complex proposed by Shire's Housing is not a good idea. With the understanding that Monument View is an expedient and opportunistic adaptation of a plan begun by Jack Appleman, I would have talked about the failed expectations of Appleman's other projects: a semi-professional baseball team, a hotel or culinary center, and too much office space so that a building and a parking lot remain path-filled. I would have talked about the problems arising from increased traffic on the already busy Grand View and Silver Streets. I would have talked about the fact that the neighborhood in question already has more than its fair share of apartment buildings. I would have talked about the possible change to the physical, material, and historic fabric of Bennington. I would have talked about the good work that Shire's Housing has done in the town, but I won't, having read Mr. Hurd's column in the Banner last Wednesday that announced Mr. Van Houten's placing a limit on comments by citizens. What I will say is that a reluctant, is the reluctance of the Select Board and the Development Review Board to listen to residents concerned about the Shire's project raises questions of motive. Why are these apartments so important to the members of these two boards? Why are the residents of Bennington not being allowed to state their case as they are prevented from doing tonight? I note, it's almost 7:30. Petitions have been submitted to the Select Board this evening with names of more than 1,000 residents. Compare that number with 379, which is the number of yes votes that approve the upgrade to the water system. If 379 people can make a change in Bennington, as they have, then the voices of more than 1,000 people should be listened to. If the Select Board accepts the grant for Shire's housing, the people who sign petitions, and perhaps others, must ask what we have to do to have a voice in the government of the town of Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you. After Tim is Becky Amos.
I hand up that I will.
Who passes that?
Good evening, my name is Tim Morrissey, I'm a registered voter and taxpayer of Bennington. The co-developers of the proposed Monument View Apartments are private, tax-exempt housing development corporations. Their business model depends on taxpayer subsidies in the forms of block grants and federal and state low-income housing tax credits to finance both rehabilitation and new construction. Quickly, for those not familiar with those sources, a grant is an outright award of government money. Tax credits, on the other hand, are issued by the US Treasury and sold to investors to raise capital. In exchange, investors, which presently tend to be large tax-paying corporations, receive a credit that reduces their tax liability on a dollar-for-dollar basis. Credits reduce tax revenue, requiring offsetting tax increases, or budget reductions, or both, if a balanced budget is to be maintained. Now, according to the grant application submitted by the proposed development, project funding will total $6.7 million for 24 apartments. This includes property acquisition, construction, and project management. Taxpayer-funded credits, and a grant, will cover over 90% of project cost, which includes the $750,000 grant we're here talking about this evening. My handout summarizes the developers' breakdown of funding sources by cost component. At $6.7 million, the developers will spend an average of nearly $280,000 for each apartment. Even at the $5.5 million figure more frequently cited in public by the developers, the average is $230,000. To help put those figures in some perspective, the current median price of 157 family homes, single-family homes listed on MLS in Bennington is $179,000. Think about that for a second. The cost of low-income apartments significantly exceeds the market value of single-family homes in a community. It's a problem with underlying public policy and how tax dollars are allowed to be used. Now, I'm sure there are many tax-paying homeowners in Bennington that would love to live in a $230,000 or higher-valued home, but can't afford it. Instead, they adjust their expectations and make prudent buying decisions based on what they can afford to own and maintain. That's being fiscally responsible. Elected officials at all levels of government have an obligation to ensure that use of taxpayer money is necessary, affordable, and cost-effective. That's especially true in times of unprecedented budget deficits and mounting tax burdens.
We're four minutes.
I understand, I promise not to take as long as Sean. There's another aspect to quickly consider. As proposed, the grand list value for the proposed development will reflect the future income from the subsidized rents, not the actual cost of construction. At the May 12th Select Board meeting, the town's chief assessor estimated the future assessed value at about $925,000 for the 24 apartments, which would yield tax revenue of approximately $23,000 annually. That works out to an average of about $960 per apartment towards school and municipal services. By comparison, the owner of the $179,000 single-family home currently pays approximately $4,600 in annual property taxes. Think about that briefly for another second. The incremental school and municipal service costs arising from the proposed development would be disproportionately shouldered by other tax-paying homeowners in town, many of whom struggle to make their own ends meet and pay their tax bills. Private landlords also pay taxes that support subsidized housing developers. As we just heard from Mr. Gully, they increasingly find they can't compete on the resulting unlevel playing field, which negatively impacts the ability to continue operating and maintaining their properties. This market distortion has a further spiraling effect on the physical condition of existing rental housing, which is detrimental to the larger community. Finally, we should question the concentration of power over the local rental market in ever fewer hands. If subsidies are to be used, redirecting funds to rehabilitate existing buildings and promote home ownership would be a far better use and work to the greater interest of Bennington. I urge the board not to accept the grant. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ken. Becky Amos is next, we have Judith Fellows-Miller after that.
Hey, I'm Becky Amos, I'm a landowner, taxpayer, voter in this town. The Rutland Herald reported that Rutland recently received a $1.25 million grant to further revitalize the neighborhood. Mayor Christopher Lawrence said it will allow the city to de-densify the neighborhood through raising buildings and putting up single-family homes in place of multifamily, to encourage home ownership, to spur private investment, and to stabilize an undervalued neighborhood. Rutland's move toward de-densifying and home ownership is supported by research that shows that home ownership stabilizes neighborhoods, which in turn increases length of tenure, increases property values, and improves physical and social conditions. According to the Vermont Housing Data Directory of Affordable Rental Housing, there are 548 units of subsidized affordable rentals in the town of Bennington. 103 of those units are within a tight radius of the proposed 24 units of Shire's housing. This includes Shire's, Brookside, and Silver Street apartments. This does not include privately-owned rental properties, bringing the number of rental units in this compact area to approximately 141. Add to this two condominium developments within the same radius for a combined additional 54 units. When do you decide that an area is dense enough? The Monument View Apartments complex is to be comprised of eight one-bedroom, 14 two-bedroom, and two three-bedroom apartments. By figuring two, four, and six people per unit respectively, that is a total of 84 people living on three acres of land. Three comparable acres of privately-owned properties on the Silver Street, on Silver Street presently has 18 residents. Since this project's primary, this is quote, "primary orientation is toward low-to-modern income families," there will be children living in the proposed development. The numbers can be debated, but whatever the numbers, these children require an adequate green space in which to play. The original drawing provided by Shire's Housing showed a 40-by-80-foot area labeled play area. On the resubmitted application drawing, the green area has been removed, giving the appearance children will be able to play in a larger area than originally designated. However, the additional area includes the storm tank overflow catch basin and sloping land. The fact that there is to be stacked parking indicates that space is in short supply in this development. The executive summary for the project advertises, quote, "The presence of open space that will be attractive to families and children," unquote. There is remarkably little open space anywhere in the area. A traffic study provided by Shire's Housing concludes that the project will not have any significant impact on the surrounding neighborhood. This conclusion is based on information gathered in a 2006 study. Silver Street is narrow, especially with cars parked in the side, making two-way travel difficult. There's a shortcut for traffic avoiding the four quarters, so is well-travel. It is a shortcut for traffic avoiding the four quarters, so is well-traveled. Perhaps the residents of Silver Street should be surveyed to see if they feel that adding traffic for twenty-four more families would have an impact. This board, last Monday night, considered a vacant property law. According to Michael Harrington, quote, "Our overall goal is to promote occupancy," unquote. How ironic that the board should consider passing an ordinance to deal with vacant properties, obviously a problem in this town, while considering approving the Shire's 24-unit project that would likely generate additional vacant properties. The best way to promote occupancy is to vote against accepting this grant. Thank you.
Judith, and then Jean McKenna.
So just as a quick reminder, all the learning theory says that people can listen for twenty minutes, and it's been an hour and a half. So... My name is Judith Fellows-Miller. I own a home on Grandview Street, yards away from the proposed project. And I handed out earlier a letter that I wrote to the review board, the first time that the application for the Shire's project was proposed. And because it's four pages long, and brevity is not my strong suit, I'm going to try and summarize and hope that I don't lose anybody, but if I do, you can ask some questions. So I focused on three specific points: historic value, accountability, and safeguards. And I highlighted lessons learned, because I really think making mistakes is okay, at least I've always been much older than that, but I really hate making the same mistake over and over. And we've been through a lot in terms of this property. We've been interacting with some of the same people, and we are again, and we were told a lot of different things. We were told a lot of different things.
That mic isn't in the room, you have to just project.
Okay, wow, alright. So, and we were told a lot of different things, and some of them sounded great, and as Mr. Broderick sounded tonight, it sounded great. And we wanted to believe things would happen in a way that would work for everyone. Unfortunately, things don't work out that way. So briefly, the historic value. I was surprised to read a letter written by the Historic Society in Montpelier that identified the Hawks House as on the state registry, and had potential for the National Historic Registry. Those of you that love architecture and history, that's a big deal. That house is no longer qualified because of what's happened to it. But in the letter, and the exchange with that organization, this is what they quote: "It is our recommendation that the blasting specifications be designed by an engineer qualified in this field to ensure that the surrounding buildings and their historic material be taken into consideration when determining the amount of charge required." So the lesson learned, and I've learned this many, many times, and I know we all have, that the rest of the state acknowledges Bennington as having more history than anywhere else in the state. Accountability. This is a really tricky one for me, and this is one I've really tried to understand, and I've been going to more meetings than I want to admit, to try and get a better picture. Specific identification of accountability for the cost of repairing damages resulting from hydraulic hammering or blasting. There have been, and I specify there are local permits and there are state permits, and I think the assumption we want to have is that when conditions are put in permits, when planning people review documents, we all want to believe that somehow, if something happens, there's going to be a way of addressing it. And I know I certainly wanted to believe that. So I was very surprised that not once, but twice, once with the Nathaniel Court, and the other time with Applejack, that my very old home, very old home, doesn't do well with blasting. She falls apart. The plaster wall's all cracked, the foundation cracks, lots of, lots of damage. When a person videotaped the building, he clearly said, "Lady, I'm not sure what they're going to tell you, but this was clearly caused by blasting." So I'm going, "Oh, wow, that's great." When I got the letter from the company, they said, "Well, our indication is that this had nothing to do with the blasting," and my only recourse beyond that was to go to court. Well, I was a single mom, kids, older, expensive kids, I couldn't afford to go to court to really fight that. So I guess the accountability piece, I've learned that the houses surrounding this property, and I think it's important to really identify, that this project and affordable housing is fine. You know, we all want affordable homes, we want to have affordable housing, we want people to be able to have a place to live. The uniqueness about this project is it's in the middle of one of the oldest neighborhoods in the community. It's on the edge of a historic district. I went to the meeting when they drew the lines, and Paul Boni said very clearly, "We're drawing the lines here because this is the only, this is the space we can afford as a community. This is as big as we can make it. We'd like to make it bigger, but we can't afford a bigger historic district, so this is where the lines are going to be." So I'm one street beyond, okay, one street beyond that. But the houses are still historic, even though the lines are in a different place. So the safeguards are critical. Promises, conditions, and documents, whatever, do not, have not, have not given us the safeguards to really protect historic homes. And I know we are only the trustees of the history in this community, and I think we're all proud of the history we have here. And I want us to find a way to make sure that we take care of what we have.
Thank you. Jean McKenna and, can you read this? I'm sorry.
Kathy Hoysington.
Oh, there you go, thank you. This is next, folks, and I'm going to reiterate that if we could keep, try and keep the three, we're starting to get longer and longer, and I have a lot of names here, so, thank you.
I practice all days, I got it down to four, I cut everything I can, I'll go as quick as I can. Hi, I am Jean McKenna, I am the mother of four. I volunteered at Bennington Elementary for many years. I was also the president of the PTG at Ben Al, and I am a previous member of the BSD Board. Mrs. Culkin, the superintendent of the SBSU, recently was asked to comment on the impact of the proposed Shire's project on the local school system. After offering his qualified opinion that ten to twelve students could be absorbed by the school system, he went on to say, quote, "However, it is also my opinion that the Bennington School District is reaching full capacity, which will then negatively impact the delivery of a quality education. There is an immediate need for study and dialogue on the current state of the school facilities in Bennington, complete with recommendations for the future," end quote. I agree with his observation that the quality of education is adversely impacted when school facilities are stretched and exceed capacity. The open question is where do we presently stand on capacity? A review of BSD Board discussions over the past several years reveals that the schools are already short on space. The students are taught in the hallways, and the district has just begun renting space on Division Street to house some of its students. There was talk last year about converting the stage at Molly Stark into classroom space. Have we answered the question yet as to whether the schools are full? In my opinion, they are. Many times when I volunteered, the student and I would sit on the hallway floor as I helped them. I've seen students taught in what used to be closets. Is this what the students deserve? Mr. Culkin attached to his letter a ten-year enrollment projection. Using 2013 to 2014 as a base year, there were 778 students in the BSD for the year. For this year, the projection is 822 students, an increase of 44 students over last year. The 2005 school year shows a projection of 858 students, an increase of 80 students over the base year. At no point in the ten-year projection did the number of students decrease to the 2013 year. One may question how accurate the projections will be, but looking at the Bennington Elementary Student Population Trends Report, going back as far as 2003, ten out of twelve years, the projections were 95% accurate or greater. These figures do not even take into consideration any new students due to the proposed Shire's project. So based on Mr. Culkin's estimate, the BSD schools may be looking at ninety or more new students for the 2015 school year. There's more. The BSD has a policy called Optimum Class Size, Policy Number 6400. Based on that policy, there are not enough classrooms to house the student population. The district is already short one classroom this year. The shortage will increase to four rooms in the following year. Again, these figures do not take into account any new students from the proposed Shire's project, so the district could actually be in need of even more rooms. The question then becomes, is the lack of space hurting the students? If you look at the kneecap test, you will see from the results that something is not working. Bennington's scores are worse than state average and have been for several years. Although some might argue that scores are meaningless, you do have to look at the results since this is how schools are evaluated. Over eighty schools in Vermont made AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress, last year. If you Google Ben Al and Molly Stark, both score a two out of a ten for school rating. If we are not giving our young students a solid education in the elementary schools, it will make it much harder for these students to succeed in the middle and high school. Sadly, we are failing our students. We should not add to the problem before fixing it. There has been much discussion on how many new students will be attending the schools. The honest answer is, nobody knows. We are asking the town to be proactive and plan for the worst case and hope for better. There's a couple of things to take into consideration with respect to the number of new students that may be added to the system. From the Shire's Own Market Study, it states that the project's primary orientation is toward low-to-moderate income families. Families normally comprise of adults and children. The same study states tenants are expected to primarily... I told you it was going to be a little over, please.
I'll take care of it, thank you.
Tenants are expected to primarily compose of households who live in Bennington and a number of surrounding Bennington County and Rensselaer County, New York communities. The study goes on to say, "The geographic area from which the majority of the project tenants are likely to be drawn is a twenty-minute drive time." It also states, "Ten to fifteen percent of the project's tenants will be made up households from outside the defined market area." So according to Shire's own information, a large number of tenants may newly arrive from outside Bennington. Lastly, according to information available from Bennington Housing Authority, the number of school-aged children from similar developments, Applegate, Willowbrook, including Shire's, is double the number of what Shire's has publicly stated to the DRB.
If you could wrap up.
I've got one paragraph, right there. I've made up packets with all the information presented here tonight for you to read through. I also suggest that you go back and read the application for the grant and the market study, as this will refresh your memory on the information Shire submitted. The young students of our town deserve the best education we can provide them. Knowingly adding more students into a system that is already failing would be a mistake. Please think of the use of this community and vote no for the grant.
Jack Carmody, oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Hoysington, and then Jack Carmody after that.
I think I got this time down to two and a half minutes, so you're gonna love it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm trying not to be redundant, and I want to thank all of you. I am so impressed at our community. I wish we could turn out like this for everybody. Think what we would do for this town if we did, huh? But John, I listened to your speech twice, I couldn't make your form, and I listened to it for forty-five minutes, you can speak, man. And one of the points that you made that I'd like to give you a different point of view on is the need that you expressed for more rentals because people weren't buying. We have affordable housing in Bennington, we really truly do. I presented an offer today for $70,000 with $100 down and $5,000 to be given back at closing for homeownership on Yage Street. We have affordable housing. If it weren't for that affordable housing, I wouldn't have a job. Almost all the housing in Bennington since the recession has been in that area, up to maybe $180,000. We have VA loans, FHA, rural development, we have no lack of financing for housing, and many young people, they are saving the real estate business in Bennington right now. It's really a wonderful thing. Where we're very short is at $200,000 and over. That's where we have people moving in with industrial and business transuries. That's where the market is stagnant, but not below 200. It's a very, very active market. I also want to bring to your attention the recent sale of three brand-new townhouses up at Jennings Brook. And you might have seen them, they're beautiful, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, one-car attached garages, selling for $225,000. I cannot compute that with the price of the units of these apartments. It's absurd. I don't, I don't have anything against private money building housing, but this is absurd to take federal money and spend $280,000 or $230, whichever number is correct, for one unit. That's ridiculous. Please remember that you are deliberating on one of the most beautiful and historic areas of our town that illustrates the Victorian area from the Industrial Revolution forward to the Homestead Crescent Boulevard. This neighborhood has been my lynchpin for describing the evolution of our town and its history throughout my career. The neighborhood has accepted change and is fighting for its varied life, value-wise, right now, particularly with the school issue. Residential value is defined by consistency of neighborhood, pride of ownership, counterability, quality schools, and peaceful environment. I implore you to wisely think and courageously act and vote no against the $700,000 state grant for housing apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Or Jack Carmody is next, Chris Oldham after that. Folks, just to give you an idea, we have fourteen people left at three minutes, that's forty-two minutes left, so that's why we ask people to go, keep it at three minutes, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to try and get everybody in, but, I know Ken...
My name is Jack Carmody. I have owned a home on Crescent Boulevard for fifteen years and paid what I consider extremely high taxes. I was brought up in Bennington, graduated in the first class from Bennington Catholic High, and was state's attorney for Bennington County in the 1960s. I decided to get involved in this issue because of its proximity to my house and started seeking more information. This led me to a group of very concerned citizens that I found to be conscientious and involved. I have not found any to be prejudicial, naysayers, or bigoted. My initial inquiry was greeted with, "Don't bother, this is a done deal." Well, I've practiced law in Florida in the last thirty years in representing nothing but developers, and what I don't like to hear is this is a done deal when it hasn't been before, the board that's going to vote and the public has a chance to talk. So I decided I'd get in to see if this was really a done deal. I don't believe it is a done deal. I believe that you are open-minded, and I've watched you this evening as everybody's made this presentation. I was very impressed by Mr. Broderick's presentation, I could have used him in Florida a few times, but what I want to point out to you is we've got to keep our eye on the ball here. There's been an effort to take our eye off the ball. We are not here against affordable housing. I'm for affordable housing. I'm against subsidized housing, okay? It's very easy to get people to wear stickers and say they're for affordable housing. Who's going to say they're not? That's very easy. The next thing you do is you go, "Well, listen, we've got naysayers out there, let's start rumors about them that they're hate mongers or bigoted." That starts to go in the other way. The next thing you do is you get up here and you say, "Boy, there's a lot of people that are afraid to come up here tonight. They're out there, they're afraid, if they get up here, they're not going to be liked." So we got all kinds of support out there, but they're not here. Well, we got petitions with a thousand signatures on it. The next thing is this letter. I will guarantee you, I'd be glad to sign this letter that they put out to have the Greater Bennington Interfaith Council sign. Greater Bennington Interfaith Council sign. That's very impressive, the names in there. My pastor's on there. I'd be glad to sign it. That's not our problem. What they say in here, we're all in favor of. You gotta keep your eye on the ball. What we're talking about is you coming up and supporting a grant for seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. If they wanna build it, they stated they can do it. Fine, take it away from you. Don't split this community. The best thing that the Shires- Oh, the other thing is, the Shires has done wonderful work. Well, I'll admit that. We aren't here to attack the Shires. I hope they continue on and do great projects in the town of Bennington. We need them. We need the revitalization. This is the wrong project in the wrong place at the wrong time, and that's what we're here trying to tell this board. And the reason that it's the wrong time is at the present time, our streets are deterior- our roads are deteriorating, our schools are already overcrowded, our private landlords cannot rent their units, our taxes have just gone up. If you got your tax bill, please check, check it out. The best thing that the Shires can do at this point is to reunite this county, this town, and not split it any further. What they should go back and consider between now and your meeting next Monday is whether or not they should withdraw this application, let this town heal, and let's go forward from there. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, folks. Chris Oldham and Michael Briggs.
Good evening. My name is Chris Oldham. I live in Bennington. I am a renter. Kathy, I'm not gonna be buying any houses anytime soon. Between Amanda and I, she's a nurse and I'm a professional marketing director, we have eighty thousand dollars in debt, so the idea of buying a house anytime soon is little to none. With that said, I'm not gonna belabor the points that have been made time and time again here. I will stick to the three minutes, unlike some of the people in here. Mary had mentioned the people that signed this petition. They're hardworking, they're professionals, they're struggling, they are single mothers, they're senior citizens trying to put food on their table, to pay for their medications, so on and so forth. If Mary Morrissey thought this, if Mary Morrissey was really representing these people, she would be representing Shires of Vermont, or Shires of, the Shires Housing, sorry.
After Mike is Vic Malani.
My name's Michael Briggs. I'm a resident of Husick Falls, New York, and president of the Board of Shires Housing. I've heard a lot here this evening. I wanted to speak to how we came to this project. The board is made up of your neighbors, your colleagues, businessmen, local and regional business people. It's bank, they're made up of bankers and attorneys, planners, architects, development professionals, accountants. We look at, we look at all of these projects very carefully. We have an independent development committee that initially looks at the projects and then goes before the entire board. We consider these projects very carefully and thoughtfully. They are debated over and over again. There are intermediate checkpoints that we use in making sure that the project makes sense. Board of Shires Housing believes this project makes sense for this community, and we encourage the selectmen to support it. Thank you.
We have Vic Malani and then Jonas Spivak.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for affording me the opportunity to speak on this issue. Like the previous speakers, Mr. Broderick, Mr. Carmody stated, we certainly are for affordable housing. I personally applaud much of the work that you've done in rehabilitating and revitalizing many of the homes in the Vermont area, Vermont Avenue area in particular. I think, again, to reiterate something Mr. Carmody said, I think it's a bad decision as far as the location of this project. I own a unit in Apple Ridge and purchased that in July of 2012. Upon purchasing that, obviously, my inquiry was related to the land adjacent to the present condominium complex, and I was told by the real estate agent that, oh, that was gonna be phase two of this condominium project. Phase one had been completed. Again, the market was not sufficient to go forward with phase two, but that was gonna happen sometime in the future. While being a little reluctant to just take the word of the real estate agent, I contacted the Apple Ridge offices and was told, yes, indeed, that was the case. There would be a phase two. These were to be condominiums that would be erected, that would be of equal or greater value than the current condominiums. The whole reason for the purchase of that particular condominium at the time was the location. It was peaceful, it was quiet, there were elderly residents there, and many of the people, even prior to the purchase, that I spoke with said, "It's a lovely community, very quiet." So we went forward knowing that. Now, with the proposed Shire project, I'd just like to address a couple of the points that you made. First of all, certainly, I understand that they would be using the access road through the present Rid, Apple Ridge condominium. Depending on the, who you believe, there'll be a certain number of allocated parking spaces to this new, this new complex, and whether it be one and a half to two spaces, so we'd be talking somewhere thirty-six, forty-eight more cars that would be going in and out of there on a daily basis through the current road that exists in our complex. Well, we're concerned about that, and again, although there's no traffic engineer study, it wouldn't apply to our private roadway. The other thing that really concerns me is, some of the previous speakers brought up is green space. I love children like everybody else. I have grandchildren, so certainly, I welcome children, but on the other hand, I welcome them to have a place to be able to play and a place to be able to enjoy the outdoors. The present plans afford very little green space, sloping land, it's inconceivable that they'd be able to play, and again, I think the estimates, whether it's ten to twelve, and again, with three-bedroom and two-bedroom units, I see at least two children per unit in those, if you're gonna have two or three bedrooms. So I think the ten to twelve estimates are very low. I think there's a lack of green space. I think I'm concerned about the number of cars that would be accessing that roadway. Again, children having no green space out in that roadway, and I fear for their safety. So again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I urge you again to consider some of those concerns that we have as residents of Apple Ridge. Again, it seems we've been deceived. We were told that that property would be used for a different purpose than is now being stated, so again, I personally am upset by that, but again, I'm more concerned about the safety of the children that would be residing there. And again, Mr. Broderick, again, continue to do the good work you do, revitalize, rehabilitate existing housing, but again, I urge you to dismiss this project. I think it's the wrong place at the wrong time.
Jonas Spivak. After Jonas is Janice Larigo. Hope I said that right. Larigo?
Well, I've been to a lot of public meetings. I'm, first of all, my name is Jonas Spivak. Many of you know me because I've been active in this community for a long time. I've served ten years on the Select Board, I've served six years on the BBC Board, I volunteer at many community events, and I've attended very many Select Board meetings on a wide variety of issues, ranging from the panhandling to the big box issue to the monument lighting. A lot of these have been very contentious issues. But I have to say, even though I have spoken in public many, many times, I am more nervous tonight about speaking than I think I ever have been. And it's partly because I'm, I'm gonna speak in support of Shires Housing, and I, along with my wife, own a retail business in town, Hawkins House Crafts Market, and she begged me not to speak tonight because of how, because of the tenor of this conversation. So Liz, I'm sorry, but here I am, so those of you with wives or husbands, I hope you can appreciate what, why I'm nervous tonight. What's gonna be waiting for me when I get home? A lot of the things I want to talk about, I think, have been well addressed by the people here, and one of the reasons I'm wearing this is because I've actually had a working relationship with Shires Housing ever since the early nineteen-nineties. I worked with Diane Binnick back when it was called BRAC. We helped with newsletters, we helped with posters, we've done a variety of things for them over the years. And like pretty much everyone in this room, one of the things I know is, this is a good organization. This is one of the good guys. This is their, their mission statement, which we've heard many times, the top-quality houses that regular, working people can afford. We all agree with that. We all get that. But what I have heard over and over tonight is that, wrong place, wrong time. And I guess that's what I'm gonna focus on tonight, 'cause it really speaks to why we're here. A lot of us would think we're here because we're talking about a large-scale development that's gonna radically change the nature of this neighborhood. That's not actually why we're here tonight, because my understanding is, that decision was already made several years ago. Now, I guess my question is, if a developer came into town tomorrow, laid their money on the table, and just picked up the existing permit application that exists now for twenty-eight units, more than what's currently being proposed, would there be any public meetings? Would there be any input? Would the Select Board be having to vote on this?
This is just about the grant.
It's just about the grant. So in a way, all the concerns and the comments we've been hearing about, this is a large-scale development that's gonna change the neighborhood, that's already happened. The neighborhood has already changed, in effect. Even though those units aren't built yet, they will be built by someone. And I would say that if the Select Board had a developer come here and say, "I want to invest five and a half million dollars into your community, I'm ready to break ground tomorrow, all I want is your support," the Select Board, since their objective is to increase the grant list and encourage development in our town, would have a hard time saying no to this. And in effect, that is all Shires is asking. This does not cost the town any money to have this development happen. This is a five and a half million dollar investment in our community that costs us nothing, that will bring money to our community. It's for a development that's smaller than is already permitted. So I guess my only comment is, the Select Board should support this project because it is an organization we know and can trust. I believe John Broderick, he says he doesn't think this will hurt that neighborhood. I agree with him. I think the testimony we've heard supports that, and I hope he will support it too.
Janice Larigo here?
No.
No? Okay. Then we go to Kevin Callanan, and then Donnie Callanan after that.
I'm not even gonna read this because everybody has basically covered everything. The gentleman who just spoke, great. But I bought into a condominium complex. Put that back in there. John, build them for us. Do that for us. One thing I do want to bring up, the other night at your forum, you said, all the diversity of, or the dividing of the town, I'm a little nervous, sorry. The dividing of the town was no big deal. Jimmy, do you agree with that?
No.
No. It divided this town. I'm fifty-three years old, almost fifty-four. I've never seen anything like this in my life. Friends talking behind friends' back, not talking to friends, family member that odds, stinks. So I would like to ask you to take this off the table. We divided this town worse than I've ever seen in my life. In 2006, I believe Bill Calvin was a spokesperson for Appleman. Pushed this through. Fantastic. Didn't come through because whatever happened with Appleman. But we have a little community up there. This is gonna affect us. The nine owners, there's three more that could be sold, so there'll be twelve owners. That's who's gonna be affected. Dave Fredrickson, I feel so bad for Dave Fredrickson, 'cause he's really gonna be affected. But the twelve owners, or the nine owners that are there now, are the ones that are gonna be most affected by this. You say, "Don't want in your backyard." Well, literally, this will be my backyard. Never been about people, who's gonna live there? It's been about the bottom line. John, the bottom line is the money. Where's it coming from? The taxpayers? That's what people are mad about. The whole United States middle class is pissed off because we pay for the rich and we pay for the poor. That's what this is all about. Thank you for your time.
John Hale's after us.
Hi, I, I think I'm more nervous than he is, but I, I own one of the townhouses to an Apple Ridge, and I just wanted to say, this is, I think this affects our, us as owners more than most people that are involved in this. It's not our backyard, it's our front yard. And my speaking here has nothing to do with low-income housing, affordable housing. I own a house, house in Mass right now, and I bought my home, and there's a low-income housing project in my, literally, in my backyard. I bought it knowing full well it was there. I want to put it on the market before we moved to Bennington, and the first thing the realtor said to me was I'd have to take a cut in the house, that, that I would have to list lower than appraisal due to that fact. I was perfectly okay with that. I bought in knowing that. I expected it. I decided to rent the house instead because we couldn't sell it. We rent right now at a loss. We take a loss every month on, on our home. My mortgage is more than what I charge for rent. You can check, check that out, it's, it's a fact. We decided to move to Bennington, and we looked for homes, and we decided that we wanted to go with a condo instead. We were looking, no maintenance, we were looking to downsize, and as the sign says when you enter our, our community, it says, "A private condominium community." That's why we bought there. Unlike buying a house, condos only appeal to certain people. Either you're just starting out, or you're elderly, you're looking to downsize. There's no children in that community. I have grandchildren. I love my grandchildren. I have them up there on the weekends, but that's not what you buy into for a condo. How are we gonna, how are we gonna sell our condo? How can put in, put in two apartment complexes, two complexes right in the middle of our community? How is that gonna affect, not affect the value of our property? Of course it's going to. It's no longer gonna be a private community. There are nine owners there. We bought into it, we invested over a million dollars into that, into that property. Other three owners, yes, they're being rented out. We pay thirty-six thousand dollars a year in taxes there. We also pay to keep the road. It's a private road. We pay, pay for plowing, we pay, pay for maintenance, we pay for everything. The town doesn't maintain our road, we do. How is that gonna affect us? We now have to pay for, for the traffic too? This is a condo community, and adding apartment complexes does not affect our, not only affects our investment, it changes the whole principle of a, of a condo community. And like I said, I am not against affordable housing. I am against it, and this, this is what we bought into. We bought into a comm, into a community of condos, not affordable housing. Thank you.
John Hale, Jeanie Jenkins on that.
Good evening. I want to say one thing. It's fantastic that everybody's come out to do this. You know, it's galvanized us either for or against. It's commendable to all of us to be out here and actually show our care for our community. Again, my name is John Hale. John and I are in very similar businesses. I've been in business for five years. I've bought seventeen buildings in the last five years. Three of those I've sold to first-time homebuyers, two of them under USDA loan. I own multi-units. Currently, we have about fifty units that I either own or manage. I'm a property manager for foreclosures for the banks in town, so I take care of a lot of vacant properties. I'm a general contractor and I'm a landlord. I want to clarify something about what I am for and against. I am not against Shire Housing at all. I think that we do the same thing. I supply affordable housing to people in this town that could not afford some of the higher-end units. I also supply higher-end units to the people that are moving to this town as well, with a complex that we just finished on Orchard Road. Out of those ten units that I have rented today, seven of the people have moved here for jobs, either in the schools, public schools, our private schools, the hospital, the VA hospital. They're all new people from out of state that came here to look for a home and work in our community. I want to tell you that I am against what, what he's building, only because there's a few things that some people have said tonight that I think are incorrect. The first thing is, it will cost our community money. Right now, that place is, is approved for, what is it, twenty-eight units? Is that correct? And- And the units that are there right now, they're assessed at between $97,000 to $118,000 each. John's units will be assessed less than $50,000. Roy Branch is at $37,500 apiece. So there's quite a difference. If we built 24 units there, and John said today, somebody will build there. Who knows? It may be me. It may be Jack Appleton someday. Who knows? Well, Apple, whatever their company is at this point. But there's a difference in revenues that the town's gonna lose that's... It'll take three years for this unit, these units, to pay the same tax that 24 units that were built there would have to pay. Right now, there's 12 units there. They pay $32,000 a year in taxes. That's about what you're gonna pay for the whole unit, if it's appraised at $925,000, not including the 6% discount. Another example of condominium selling in town, Jennings Brook, three units have sold this year. They're assessed at $275,000 a year, assessed on the grant list. They pay a larger tax than John's unit, well, I should say Shire Housing's. I'm sorry, John, it's not your units, but I think that it will cost money for this town in the long run. This is a long-term community that's gonna be there for a long time, and that revenue's gonna be long-term lost in our town for instance. Okay. Just let me wrap up here a little bit. I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry. I hope that you vote no on this grant, for this particularly use. Use the grant to help address the blighted vacant buildings and hold Shire Housing to the mission of restoring not new construction. Leave new construction to the private investor, who will build that property to the use Jack Appleton planned, and the long term will be more beneficial to the grant list.
Thank you. Jeanne Jenkins, we have, is it Rick Guerrero next? Hope I said that close enough that they can recognize.
Great, thank you. My name is Jeanne Jenkins. I'm here to reaffirm my support, my strong support for this project. My family's lived in this neighborhood for 25 years. My kids grew up in this neighborhood. It is a historic neighborhood. It's also always been a mixed neighborhood, as we've heard. We have historic houses, we have condominiums, we have apartments, we have duplexes. We've always had professional people there, people that are working hourly wages, students. It's a very, very diverse neighborhood, and that's part of the beauty of that neighborhood. I want to say that there is plenty of green space in our neighborhood, and I'm surprised at the number of people that say there is not. I live on one end where there's a nice woods, and I have neighbors that live on the other end of this neighborhood, and there's a nice woods there. I have tree houses built in my woods every year, so I can attest that kids play all over the neighborhood. Green space is not an issue in this neighborhood. This housing meets a real need in Bennington. We're not a wealthy community, but we are a hard-working community, and it is the decent and right thing to build housing that supports our community. I do want to say one thing about the school issue, because it keeps coming up. We will have to deal with our school issue, one way or the other, because it's an economic development issue in this community. If we want to have economic development, we have to be able to support new people coming in. That is not an issue for Shire's Housing. That is an issue for this community to address altogether. So I just, in closing, want to say that again, I do support it, and I do hope that you will support this project. It is the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
And we have, okay, another.
I'm Dick Guerrero, and I've been a longtime resident of Bennington. I would like to just comment on two things. The first is that we live, we are butters to an existing Shire's property. It's been there for about 10 years or so. Prior to Shire's taking over that property, it was in terrible shape. It's a lovely 1830 Greek Revival building that looked like it was destined to fall down or maybe be demolished for a gas station or a convenience store. But when Shire's took it over and did a really remarkable rehabilitation of it, they added an addition that was compatible with the previous design. And in the decades since that time, they have been good neighbors. I can't recall any problem. We live close by. We feel fortunate that Shire's did what they did to that building. I think it was a benefit to the community as well as to our neighborhood. The other comment I'd like to make, I think, that touches on what Mr. Spivak mentioned a moment ago, and that is, when Appleman and Clearcut, the Hawks' property, and the neighbors nearby lost that lovely wooded area, I certainly can be sympathetic with that, because that has to be a loss for them. But it's happened, and I think it's an example of what can happen if you have an unsuccessful development. I think if anything, we all would agree on, that Shire's has been a remarkable performer in this community. It's had a long track record of doing very good work in some very challenging neighborhoods. So I can only imagine what might happen for the next developer who does come in there and either successfully builds multiple units, or in fact fails like the previous. Then what are you gonna do? So I think you can't turn the clock back. The neighborhood has been altered. The trees are gone. I really would urge that those folks in the neighborhood perhaps negotiate directly with Shire's about matters of traffic and noise pollution and green space, and see what kind of accommodation can be made, rather than just be outright against it and looking to turn the clock back a decade. Thank you.
Pac Guerrero's next? Pac Guerrero's, yeah, all set? Oh, okay. Bill Wolf is up then. Sorry to surprise you, Bill. And Bruce Lowmeister is on deck.
My name is Bill Wolf. My wife and I live and own a unit at Nathaniel Court. We attended, my remarks tonight are two and about Mr. Broderick. We attended his meeting the other night of information. And tonight's, what he had to say was pretty much the same thing. Very informative. But one thing you said was that you do listen, and that is true. You do listen intently. But what you do listen for is to counteract and to rebut what those of us who are for the project or against the project have to say. And it did come out, you were true colors the other night, and the same thing, pretty much the same thing tonight what you said the other day. You don't care. You don't care about the people of Bennington. You don't care about destroying the infrastructure of a neighborhood. You don't care about the people you might put into your housing, those apartments up there that you hope you'll build. That you're building that thing on the top of the steepest hill in this town. And most of the people you'll have in there won't be able to walk downtown or back up again. And you don't care about the, over the hundreds of people who signed the petition saying they do not want this housing project. You just plain don't care. What you do care about is getting the millions of dollars in federal money to build your projects, no matter who gets in your way. It was explained to you the other night by John Hale and Bruce Lowmeister, how much overrun, how much extra it costs. It's quite almost two and three times as much what it would cost a private developer to build those things. It's, and you didn't care. You didn't care what they say. Sure Mr. Lowmeister's gonna come here right now and say the same thing again, and you don't care. The plumbing and the sewer is in construction, right there. It has been. It was put there originally. And it's there for individual houses to be constructed. That was the original intent. And if you leave that land vacant, private contractors in Bennington will go there and build something, build individual houses, which will bring you a lot of nice tax dollars. As compared to, the local contractors and local people working, as compared to Shire's, who hire from out of town. What you are is an entrepreneur hiding under a non-traffic umbrella, living off government waste. It sounds like there's some people here who have their hands in your pocket to help this happen. The hundreds of people who don't want this, would like not to have this project happen, have spoken. Please take your dog and pony show and go elsewhere.
Bruce Lowmeister is up, and Jim Veers, is it?
Yeah, I'm Bruce Lowmeister, former owner of CTC Photo, which had gone down to the tap system. Currently the chairman of the Bennington Center for the Arts. I have a long history in nonprofit housing, starting in 1968, in Schenectady, when I worked for GE. And I established what became the best nonprofit housing corporation in the United States. And I got an award from President Nixon to prove it. Anyway, the one hallmark of our nonprofit was called Better Neighborhoods Incorporated. We were totally oriented to rehab. We rehabbed 110 two-family houses, seven rooms and two baths on each floor. We did it with our own crew. No government dictated anything. We never took a cent of government money. I went out and personally raised a half a million dollars. And I'm not a very religious guy, but I gave 34 Sunday sermons in churches in 1968 to raise a half a million dollars in no interest bonds. The return is in your community, and we paid back every one of them. I supported reasonable, affordable housing here until they started building and taking government money. Haven't given them any money since. We were able to sell all of our 110 houses to low-income families because the rent on the other apartment would pay the mortgage and most of the taxes. As a result, we never needed government money, and the houses never came off the tax rolls. Now, since I've been here, my wife and I got involved in a little bit of affordable housing. It hasn't been fun. I hear about the only 2% vacancy rate. God, do I wish that was true. One of my units has been empty for six months. Hers has been empty for a year, down on Jefferson Avenue and Union Street. If I had the taxes rate that Shire's pays, I could rent my three-bedroom, two baths for $600 a month, and my one-bedroom, one bath for $350. I'll bet Shire's isn't renting for any less than that. Incidentally, there are two good affordable housing places, if you don't know it. One's on Silver Street, and one's at Depot and Allen. And I own 27% of each of them. And they've been kept up, they've been, yeah. It's a great investment. Yields me $3,000 a year. Not exactly a big bang, windfall. But I believe in nonprofit housing. I've done it. When I moved back to New Jersey to run a chemical company, I established another one at Easton, Pennsylvania. Same principle. It worked there too. By taking government money, as I said at the meeting at Masonic Hall, when you take government money, it's exactly equivalent to your first snort of cocaine. You can't stop. It goes on from there. John explained, I said, "How on earth can you spend $250,000 to build a two-bedroom unit?" And John said, "Well, the government dictates this, and the government dictates that." I said, "Exactly my point. You don't want that money." If you took that $700,000 and reduced the taxes up by $2,000 on every affordable duplex in Bennington, the rentals on them, it would provide 350 low-income housing units. I also made another calculation. The house that I own on Silver Street, built in 1860, I bought it for $120,000. I totally modernized it, upgraded the heating, total insulation. Didn't have to fix the roof. It's been there since 1860, 'cause it's late. And with that house, I'm told by realtors, I could not sell it for more than $150,000. Three bedrooms, two baths, one unit, one bedroom, one bath, the other unit.
Bruce Lowmeister, I need you to wrap up. I need you to wrap it up, yeah, whatever format. Thank you.
My suggestion to the Shires is, forget this new housing with government money. Instead, buy a unit like mine for $150,000. It's totally up to code. But go ahead and spend $50,000 to even upgrade it further, make it luxurious. So you've now got two units at $100,000 a unit. Sure beats the hell out of that government money. The other thing I can't help but wonder, I've never seen a condo in Nathaniel Court, just almost a neighbor of this supposed thing, for more than $99,000 for a two-bedroom unit. Why are we taking government money? Please don't.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Jen Veers, resident of Bennington, a member of a small family trust who's been acting, pursuing, buying some investment properties, turning into rental properties here in Bennington. First, I do want to thank the select board and the town of Bennington for all the time you've put into this process. It's taxing. I know the decision's gonna be hard. And I do want to say, I applaud Shire's for bringing low-income housing, affordable housing, to Bennington. It's something that our community desperately needs. That's something that we're trying to do as a small family trust investing in Bennington. I applaud the business practices that you use, background checks, helping people raise up out of low standards and have a safe, quality place to live. This is something that we want to do also. Places that we've looked at in Bennington, using a local realtor, and will be using local financing, are quite frankly, some have been appalling, some have been structurally unsafe, some have been good properties, but it's still gonna take some investment for us to bring them up to code, and then we need to compete. How do we keep our stated goal also, of keeping these families in this home? You know, with all the capital investment we have to make. I wish we have the money to compete. I wish we had a federal grant. We don't. We're a small family trust. We're doing the best we can. We want to be responsive to the community. We love this community. I want to see affordable housing. I want to see affordable housing. I want to see all of our neighborhoods brought up, not just 24 units in one place. And I know that, I watched your thing, I know you do rehabs, and you plan on doing more rehabs. I would ask, sir... I would ask, sir, that no matter how this project turns out, that you devote your attention also just as strenuously as you have for this one, to bringing up all of Bennington, all of our communities, because we could all benefit from having community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's our last speaker night. I want to thank everybody for getting here and being orderly, and the folks that stayed in three minutes, I appreciate it, the folks that didn't, I appreciate the preparation you put into it. We're going to reconvene next week and vote on this. You can contact the select board during the week, US mail, or through theselectboard@benningtondt.org. That is our email address. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Any open discussion that we might have, or questions?
Well, we'll discuss it, yeah, when we make a motion, there's time for discussion, just like this.
Okay.
All right, call and save it. Thank you. All right.